When I talk to him, I think we like were like perfectly offset.
Well, that worked out well.
All right.
You only mentioned attending the last meeting remotely, so make any kind of arrangement or negotiation for that tonight.
How's work?
All right.
There's a story to that.
Is there?
Yeah, I got Charlie, but I had a Bloomberg reporter reach out to me.
Really?
Yeah.
Don't want to say too much.
Turn off Galaga.
Isn't it Gallagher?
We're waiting to six thirty.
Right, yes, I always call it Gallagher.
Gallagher. My dad always called it Galaga, but chances are, since we're from Hilldale, Iowa, you probably pronounce it wrong.
Pretty confident we said right.
Okay, it looks like they started it early.
All right, we'll start rolling then. All right, calling to order the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Long Lake City Council. Good evening, everyone. It's six thirty P M. All council members are present this evening with the exception of council member newcomer. For item two, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three, mayor's comments. Long Lake News, meeting review and updates. So there has been a kind of a busy couple of weeks since we last met just before the Fourth of July. So hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. It was a nice Friday, pretty hot, as those, as you remember if you're in town. A good, good weekend there. And then this past weekend was very busy with Buckhorn Days on Saturday. Great event all day long in Nelson Lakeside Parks. Want to thank Long Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, specifically Marty Schneider for organizing that. Other participants of the Long Lake Waters Association, Orin Alliance, Wayzata Police, Long Lake Fire Department. They tried a few new things this year, including in the morning having the Long Lake Fire Department Red Hot Run, which has been on a different date historically, but was on the date of Buckhorn Days this year, so mixed it up a bit and had a new course and ran that. That was a fun event and wasn't, wasn't too hot, thankfully. So good turnout there and good turnout at Buckhorn Days itself. I haven't gone over to the Pioneer Museum to check officially yet, but I think it's probably the first time we had All-Star wrestlers in Nelson Lakeside Park. So that was a little interesting, different spin on things, but brought out a really good crowd. So I know a lot of our council was there as well and good to see there. We got some good feedback. That was well, well attended by us as well as other community members. So I know a lot of work goes into planning those types of events, so thank you to those that, that were involved in that. It's always a great event for our community. Otherwise, continue to have issues at Nelson Lakeside Park as far as the blue, I think, blue-green algae is the quasi-official diagnosis there, not just, it's happening, understanding it's a lot of lakes in our area right now, especially with the warmer weather and other factors. So our staff put out an email earlier today about the beach being closed currently, but the water levels have subsided, at least as before, about a half hour ago or so. Hopefully this latest rain didn't change that. I'm sure it didn't. So good that the lake is open again when it comes to that at least. Upcoming event that we just learned about is on Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, the Wayzata Police Department is sponsoring a, kind of hosting a new, a new type of event, which is called Sand Castles and Squads. So you can go down to Wayzata, to the Beach in Wayzata on that afternoon of, from one at three P M., where they're going to have free treats and, and water and have a sand castle building contest with prizes. And you get to build sand castles with the Wayzata Police Department. So that seems like a neat community event and certainly those, I'm assuming it's mostly geared towards children that live in Long Lake as well as Wayzata are invited to attend that. And our city staff has put out information on that, so thank you for that. So lots going on in the middle of the summer here and hopefully everyone's getting outside to enjoy some of these events. All right, with that, we'll move on to item four, which is to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item five is consent agenda. Items A through E on the consent agenda this evening, including item E, which is a special event permit for Corn Day's five K run and walk on August ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Did I read that that's going to follow the same course as the, as the Red Hot Run? Yeah, okay. Neat. Yeah, that was a nice course.
Because from an event perspective for approval, I mean, the map's essentially already been approved and tested for a couple of years, so it made a pretty quick turnaround.
Great. Yeah, the firefighters did a really good job staffing the positions. I think there's only the one point where it crossed Wayzata Boulevard, so made for, at the official Marv Wurzer, or the crossing to Wurzer Trail there, so it was a good course. Great. Well, any questions, other questions for staff on the consent agenda?
Just the ecumen, the letter credit. So we're refunding sixty-two K?
As far as that, I actually didn't put that on consent tonight for, because I thought council might have some questions, so that's actually going to be on our regular business item.
Okay, perfect.
Regular business item. No problem.
Good question. All right.
I assumed it was.
Any other questions for staff? Otherwise, entertain a motion to approve the evening's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item six, open correspondence. Open correspondence is an item on the agenda in which the public may address the city council. No formal actions taken by the city council and comments shall be limited to five minutes or less. In open correspondence, comments may also be emailed to city staff by noon on the day of the meeting. Anyone wish to approach for open correspondence this evening? Okay.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Brian Miller, two ninety-five Lakeview Avenue. I don't have a very good presentation tonight, but I do have some stuff I'd like to get across. And it'd probably be a little bit scattered presentation, but, you know, bear with me. So I'd like to draw the city's attention to County Road Six, which recently the Hennepin County repaved that road. And I thought I was done talking about roads, and I really am. But I'm not. Because if you look at County Road Six, they just did a beautiful job with this small stone and oil overlay. It seems like a fancy new version of the oil and stone overlay. It's really nice. It's probably too expensive for us. But I know that two meetings ago, this council voted to go ahead and spend sixty thousand dollars on the industrial park streets. If you go to look at those streets, they're in fine shape. They are in, I don't see why they need any maintenance whatsoever. When it comes to Lakeview Avenue, if you don't mind, I'm still using my map from nineteen forty. When it comes to Lakeview Avenue, Central Avenue and Upper Lee, those are worse than a cattle trail at this point. And it's neglect going back to after Marv resigned. I don't remember what year that was. Jeanette, maybe you do. But you may recall, a friend of mine from MinDOT is a road designer. He did the Super Two here. And when he was riding his bike down Lake, my bike down Lakeview Avenue, trying it out, he came back and commented about Lakeview Avenue and what a mess it is. And I asked him, would that oil and small stone work to, you know, is that sufficient? He said, absolutely. I mean, that'll buy you several years. So I know Charlie is down at the state Capitol and, you know, advocating for money for Lakeview Avenue. And that's great, and I really appreciate it. But I also really appreciate the hard work that this city and this council has put towards the fire department. I know everybody's been sidetracked by this for several years. But this issue goes back to, like I said, back since Marv retired. When I moved in twenty-six years ago, I almost immediately met Marv, standing in Central Avenue. And he explained to me, the roads are twenty-two feet wide, the city right-of-way is fifty feet, so that means that fourteen feet into my property is actually the city's right-of-way. And it's the city's responsibility. A couple of weeks ago, I was down in a neighbor's house at one hundred Lakeview Avenue block. And he explained to me, when he was having his driveway installed, that he contacted the city about the culvert that goes underneath it. So he was met by Sean, and Sean told him that culvert is not his responsibility. Well, it is. Long story short, Sean accepted responsibility, dealt with the culvert, and the driveway got done. So what I'm leading up to is, there's, I feel, after my twenty-six years of living here and since Marv retired, there's severe neglect going on in this portion of Long Lake Heights. Everybody's streets are getting taken care of. You know, Martha Lane's in great shape. John, sometimes you bring up things on, why is that a boulevard that need to be repaired? Stuff like that. A bush has died out and stuff. The city is on it like that. So I just feel like there's such severe neglect going on that these roads now have become... Well, let me add this. Tim Holtman came back from the city and said that now Lakeview is being kicked down to Can. Can's being kicked down to twenty-thirty. And that's not acceptable. You gotta go take a drive on Lakeview Avenue. Look at Central Avenue, look at Upper Lee. It is worse than a cattle trail. And if my friend from MinDOT says that this oil and stone thing, which has got to be inexpensive compared to what Charlie's trying to do with curb and gutter and tearing out the whole street and doing the whole thing, you need to do something to buy more time, because twenty-thirty is too far down the road and it's, it's going to be pavement popping up. I know they just did some patchwork. The patchwork was not very good. The first snowplow that goes across is going to tear all that out this, this winter. But I, my main concern is really that it's the city's responsibility. When Marv was in charge, Marv ran the backhoe, installed this culvert underneath Central Avenue and Lakeview Avenue. And I've spent a lot of time maintaining the ditches myself. Unfortunately, this culvert is now halfway covered. It's no longer draining. The water sits here. And as you know, the water sits in my backyard. This is Mildred and Drake, a little remedy for you. They've been coming here for the past three years to swim in the pond of my backyard, because this drain does not drain, because it's too high off the ground. So I guess my point is, the city used to pay attention to Long Lake Heights. We had a public works director that gave a rat's ass. Marv used to come and trim my lilacs. And I ran out there and said, Marv, no, 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 what are you doing? You know, he's like, I need to be, the street, people on the street to be able to see the stop sign at Central Avenue. I said, I agree, but let me trim it. Ever since then, I trimmed the city's right-of-way so that people can see the stop sign. But that's the city's responsibility. All of these things are the city's responsibility. If you go walking down Lakeview Avenue, most people's homes are immaculate condition. Everything that's the city's responsibility looks dumpy and unkempt. And this is just one of many culverts that are not, no longer draining. There are a couple of residents who have filled in their ditch or allowed the culvert to disintegrate or whatever. They don't do anything. But most of us try to upkeep everything. And we don't have to. It didn't used to be that way. Marv used to take care of it. And he also said thank you to me for taking care of the city's right-of-way. I remember I laid sod after he came with the backhoe and redid all the ditches and put in new culverts. We, Mark Jones and I dressed up our culvert. It looks very nice. It's still in good shape. But my point is, Public Works needs to get back to paying attention to this portion of Lakeview Avenue. Because if you go around Long Lake, this portion of Long Lake, Lakeview Avenue, Brown Road, if you go around Long Lake, this looks like a disaster zone. And it's embarrassing. So...
So I, where, where are Lakeview and Upper Lee laying on the scale of, because I've walked those in.
I think those are two of the streets that you mentioned when we were talking about the, last week when we were talking about the budget. Those were two of the ones that you had asked that we put as priority.
Also, I believe it was... I'll say on Marv's watch, the city came and did that oil and small stone overlay thing, where they come back and sweep it up later and stuff. And that bought time.
And I think it does buy time. Part of the justification for doing it on the roadways that are currently in better conditions to keep them that way. And I think the situation...
Well, remember, MinDOT expert said, yes, that would buy time.
Right.
That's my experience.
I absolutely understand that. But on Lakeview Avenue, it's not just that. That's an issue. The roadbed itself is in terrible shape underneath.
I don't care about the roadbed. We're not talking about the roadbed.
I understand.
We're talking about the surface. It's oil and stone, and it fills in the gaps, and it'll seal things up and buy us time. That's all. So I don't know, I got to tell you, I am, like I said, this goes back before the fire department stuff. This goes back to the, once Marv retired, is when things started to change. And it makes me so mad, because I literally spend every spring, up until the past two years, because I broke my leg, and I clear out the ditch to make sure it keeps draining. I shouldn't have to do that. I have to tell you too, one time the water main broke on Brown Road and flooded my garage, and I came home and there was Marv. He wanted to get inside the garage and make sure there wasn't any damage and stuff. And that was wonderful. That's a guy who cared. And that's what we need, is the city to start acting like to give a rat's ass about this part of Lakeview or Long Lake. I mean, I'm sorry, it was insulting to hear that we're spending sixty thousand dollars on those streets. I just wouldn't drove them today. It's like, oh my God, these streets are fine. So I appreciate everything you guys do. You do a great job. You know, I feel that way. But that's my twenty-six year history here, and I wanted you to know about it. And also, I'll say, I'm comfortable saying I speak for everybody on Lakeview Avenue. I speak for everybody on Upper Lee. And, and there you go. So I know I joke a lot, but I am dead serious about this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Any submitted requests?
I do have one. I received an email this afternoon from Marty Schneider that he asked me to read aloud this evening. And moving forward with that, greetings, Long Lake City Council members. Please accept our sincere thanks to you, or to you all and to members of the Long Lake Administration who helped guide us as the Long Lake Area Chamber of Commerce during the planning for this past Saturday's Buckhorn Days Festival. In addition to the regular events, we were excited to partner with the Long Lake Fire Department for the first time to have their Red Hot Run five K as part of Buckhorn Days, along with a revival of the carp fishing contest and the first major All-Star wrestling event in Long Lake. In particular, Jeanette Mueller should be recognized for guiding us through the application process, publicity, and details needed to prepare for and have the day go smoothly. I'd also like to extend a special thanks to Sean Dirks and his public work staff for their wonderful work in preparing the park and being there for us before, during and after the festival. We're still winding down from last Saturday and would like to be on the next agenda to give you a full debrief on the event. It was truly a pleasure to see all of you attend this year's Buckhorn Days as well. Also, please remember to get ready for the August ninth, Corn Days Parade.
That was great. And thank, shouldn't, it should be mentioned that I don't think there was any injuries at the bouncy house, right?
No, one head collision, but they seem to walk away from it.
You did a great job supervising the bouncy house. That's always a tough, a tough gig for an entire day.
Thanks.
So it took a village.
What?
It takes a village to put this stuff on, that's for sure, community. All right, thank you, Jeanette. All right, with that, we'll move on to item seven, regular business. Start with seven, eight, receive second quarter twenty-twenty-five revenues and expenditures. Andy, is this you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to first say, my quality, I was wrong. That was not second quarter. I apologize.
I figured that, but soon as you get to it.
Can you tell my, my mind was in second quarter? So to answer your question, because it does pertain to the budget, there was, Zavago had posted a cash letter of credit, line of credit, when development began. We worked with our engineers to decide how much was required to continue holding as collateral until repairs were completed and warranty was expired. And we were given a number by the engineers and were able to refund the difference. And that money was sitting in the escrow fund, which is Fund seven hundred. So...
So we already gave him back, this was the remaining balance, sixty-two was the remaining balance?
No, that's just what we gave him back. We're still holding one hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, of the, of the two fifty, we gave back sixty.
Okay, so I got it.
Yes, so there'll be one hundred and ninety-two thousand remaining until we have appropriate time to make sure everything's completed and warranty has expired.
Just because it says warranty maintenance and it says a negative, so that, that's the part you're holding?
I wanted, yes, I wanted to do it in the, in the books as a negative, so that if they, if we ever had to look back, we could see that.
Yeah.
I did the full process, rather than just cutting the sixty-two. I wanted to show how we came to the sixty-two.
Okay. Because when does the warranty maintenance bond expire?
Two year usually.
Two years?
Really? Hasn't been two years yet?
Oh, hasn't started yet.
From, from completion.
Hasn't been completed yet.
Warranty from completion.
Yeah.
They still have a couple items outstanding to complete, which is, so the retainage is not just for the warranty bond, but for the completion of a couple outstanding items. The portion being released is for what they have completed from their punch list.
Correct.
Okay.
So as I mentioned, I apologize, my brain...
No, I, I looked at it.
I'm thinking.
She'll bring it up.
I did, I did. Now, moving on to the second quarter profit and loss, I wanted to let you know that currently, most of our funds right now are on budget, where I would expect to see them mid-year. They're ranging between forty-three and fifty-six percent of expenses. There are two exceptions to that, one of which is the sewer fund. That's currently at seventy-two point six percent of its, of its expenses. There are some annual expenses that have already been paid out of that, which would justify some, as well as some additional engineering costs this year, which I'll discuss a little bit more as well. The other fund that was slightly higher than half would be our storm, our surface water fund, which is currently at sixty-eight point seven percent. But that is as a result of our annual costs that have already been paid, such as depreciation and bonds. Looking at your packet, I'm actually going to do my packet, so I can tell you the right numbers. If we look at cash balances on page thirty-six, cash balances are doing really well. The only fund balance right now that's, that is at a negative is the Fire Capital Fund, and that is due to the purchase of the utility eleven vehicle. We talked about it a little bit last week. We'll either be doing a transfer at year end to make that fund whole, or if there is any settlement money, then that money would go right into that fund. Otherwise, the other, the other funds are all cash positive and as expected, where I would, where I would expect this time of year.
So when the Seal Coat Patch Fund, talking in further to Brian's comment, is that in addition, the sixty K left in that fund?
That is actually, that was the total amount we budgeted this year. That's how much we transferred into that fund. If you recall, in years past, it would just sit in the budget, and if we didn't use it, it kind of just went away. And we felt like by creating its own fund and doing an annual transfer, that would allow us to keep funds that weren't used. So if a fund come, or if a project comes in at forty thousand, then we have twenty thousand for the next year.
So this wasn't the one, this hasn't been used by the...
That could have, that's, it hasn't been used yet. We haven't done our seal coating project.
But that was the one that we approved for.
We did approve.
For Industrial and Daniels and the one that was the last meeting.
So this will be zero.
Pretty close to zero, yes.
Okay.
And given, given the nature of the seal coating need, I don't expect to run that fund large. I think each year, we're going to try to, you know, schedule projects and use the money as it's budgeted, just so we don't have to wait so long on certain projects until money is available. We'll just budget accordingly and do the transfer accordingly
Okay.
with need. And that is something that we decide when we approve the annual budget each year, how much should be transferred into that fund. When you're looking at your packet, like I said, most of the expenses are as expected. A few of them that I just wanted to point out quickly are going to be, it's going to be on page thirty-eight at the bottom. You're going to see engineering fees there. We're at one hundred and thirty-seven. And this is going, this was related to some larger projects that we had this year, specifically two fifty Linda Wood, eleven thirty-eight Underhill, some of the larger projects that ended up having engineering costs. Other ones that we had in streets, which is engineering fees as it related to our street fund, which you're going to see it on page forty, we're at two hundred and seventy-two percent of what our budget was. But that was due to G.I.S. mapping costs that we had completed. We also put all, all engineering costs as are related to the Grand Avenue Bond expenses, just trying to get that Grand Avenue Bond. That was also in that, in that expense. And that totaled around thirty-six hundred dollars in preparation for that.
But we'll be able to use some of that information for Grand Avenue?
I believe so, yes. The other engineering fund I wanted to mention to you, as I told you, it related to the sewer fund, that we're sitting at seventy-two percent of the expenses. We, we had engineering costs so far as a second quarter.
What page is this on, sorry, the sewer?
Forty-four.
Right down, eleven hundred, twelve hundred percent.
Thank you. Forty-four, about middle of the page. You're going to see it has a note of two next to it. I just wanted to let you know specifically that the District One Sanitary Sewer Televising Project, as far as like reviewing the results, that was an eight thousand dollar engineering cost. And then the other one was money that we've, that the engineers have spent with, working with Met Council to try to bring down our I and I costs. Now...
Aren't we going to use some of our TIF fund money for this, or not?
We actually met with the, with the engineers today to discuss future needs as far as the sewer lining, what our thoughts were as far as District One, looking at the results and talking about funding sources. We will be bringing that to you in another meeting. TIF is definitely on our radar, and it will be earmarked for sewer lining.
Okay.
And kept in a funded total.
But couldn't it be also used for work related to sewer lining and sewer evaluation, like?
Realistically, once we get into how much is going to be needed, it won't matter. It won't even, it won't be a drop in the bucket for what we need. Like I said, we had a meeting with them today, and we're going to be bringing the District One results probably at the next council meeting, as well as brainstorming a direction on how we would like to perceive a sewer lining in our city. I've also talked to Scott a little bit. I think our engineering costs have gone up with just rate per hour of engineers and some of the magnitude of the projects that we're doing, some of the magnitude of the projects that are being done, being done by residents, and that we just want engineers' input on. So we're going to be looking at raising those budget line items a little bit next year to try to...
Be closer.
So the line for actual clean and televised sewer lines that went, has gone over to, what, what was the reason for that? Just because we did more than we anticipated?
I think just budgeting. I think when we did the budget mid, mid last year, we tried to make a rough guess of where it was going to be. So we came up with a twenty-five thousand based on prior, you know, prior televising. But when the actual estimate came in, it was closer to thirty-two. Now, that estimate did come in lower than WSB had quoted it would be, but at budget time last June, we were still thinking twenty-five. We hadn't hired WSB to do that yet.
Will we be winding down on televising, or will it be that level every year going forward now?
It's usually depending on linear... It's usually depending on linear feet and size of pipe. So, you know, we didn't have all the details, if you want to say, of the actual size of pipe. That's what the GIS can do for us now is tell you linear feet, size of pipe, so we can get better closer to what our estimates can be.
I'm just asking if, if we're anticipating like a thirty thousand dollar a year, uh.
Well, yeah, more than likely, we're going to televise, we're gonna go over, we're gonna televise some two and three this year. So we can try getting a Met Council grant.
Okay, but.
So we're, so we're just gonna do it all?
To answer your question.
Going on either every year?
It was, it was intended to be every year, but that's after the meeting we had today. We're actually thinking we might, um, actually go ahead right away and, and televise two and three. That, that's what we're gonna talk about next council meeting. Um, and then once we televise it and once, if we line it, we won't be televising it every year.
That was my question.
Yeah, once it's done.
Item goes on for a long time or just a few more years or?
I, I think it's gonna be more, we rip off the Band-Aid this year and then hopefully.
And then you go more on a five-year rotation.
What's the, is the expense for two and three each gonna be thirty-ish?
Probably, because one side, one area can be a little bit bigger. So like, I think district four, district one was the far east side. District four is the one we've already done and line, so two and three are gonna be like the downtown is two and I think three is the far west side. So it'll, average will probably be close to thirty, depending on one bigger than a smaller, but it's gonna come down to the size of pipe and linear feet.
So we got sixty grand sitting ahead of us on, for televising here in the next twelve-ish months?
Within three months.
I think so.
Yeah.
Within three months. And then we're gonna talk to, um, Sean about getting some quotes. Now, I think by doing both projects at once, we might be able to save a little bit of money, because obviously they're already here. I mean, the implementation would already, it would just be a larger area, so it probably, I'm hoping it wouldn't be a full sixty.
Was that sewer line that goes onto the railroad that's really bad? Was that part of district one? Or, or when was that discovered that that was bad?
Under the railroad or under the, um.
I, I thought.
Creek.
It was under the creek.
Oh, okay, under the creek.
It still goes under the railroad.
Eventually.
That was in district one. We were looking at some of that today. We're gonna show you some of the videos next week. And, um.
Some of them are sort of like turning on a faucet.
Jeanette and I were talking and unless you would like, we were thinking of not having WSB to show you the videos, because it's a pretty self-explanatory. And then we could save on some engineer, engineering costs and maybe have staff.
Is there any way like we could do some, um, the engineering, um, with a separate company rather than WSB, like some engineering?
Well, one thing I know we are talking about and Scott and I looked at it with this month's bill, because engineering costs are getting really, really high and hard to stay within my budget. But we're asking if our engineer, our main engineer Jeff is wonderful at his job, but we're wondering if there's more things that he can start, start outsourcing to his. Um, staff that I have, yeah, to staff that have less hourly rates than himself. So we're hoping to try to utilize other staff and then maybe have him just in, as a review source. Um, I do think it will be something that staff has to look at much closer this year when, as we're doing the budget, because like, like we told them today in the meeting, we can't spend all our money planning how to fix a project and not leaving any money left to actually fix a project. So.
An analogy?
Then we have to get them again because. Cause we don't have any.
Would you say we pay in engineering costs altogether from WSB this, or will?
I can tell you what this month's bill is. This, and the only reason I know that is because we've been going back all, all day I want a detailed explanation. But this month's bill is fifteen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand dollars.
So, so when does it get to the point where we just say, let's hire our own engineer?
When we have enough money to do roads?
Well.
But I mean, this is, if it's seventeen thousand in a month, is that?
Is that unusual?
I think there certainly are communities that hire public works directors with engineering backgrounds.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have that right now. We have a full-time public works director who is not also a city engineer. Um.
But they always have their own, still carry on, like, they still have a company that does it. So Ornol is the only one in the area that has a combination public works director, admin, public works director. Not married public works director anymore, but admin engineer.
They are, they are.
I don't use to, but he retired.
Always outsourcing the big stuff. I, when I used to work for Chaska, they have a city engineer and, you know, a bit of an engineering department there. But again, they were outsourcing to S E H at the time, um, for the big road projects. They were just able to handle a little more of the internal reviews. Um, but yeah, big projects and, you know, big documents and plans and specs that always, you know, we go through an engineering consultant, but.
Well, there's different kinds of engineers, obviously, right? So they're not necessarily one person. If we were to hire somebody, they couldn't necessarily do every kind of engineering task, I would imagine, or.
I think we're also dealing, um, with our current city engineer, I would say is a great engineer, but, but hasn't done a ton of consulting, I think, before coming to WSB. So he, like a city employee, uh, just gets it done. But in the consulting model, we need, we need that authorization to go through us, because, uh, you know, we don't, it, if someone's reaching out to our engineer, for example, we don't want them to be reaching out to that person every day of the week. That should be coming through us. Um, those are available hours. So I think we're also, we had some really good talks this week a- about that. And, um, just doing that a little differently moving forward, um, as well as working a little more with junior staff where, where we're able to. And I'm hoping that we're gonna be getting somewhere. I think the message is starting to come across, um, that we are being very vigilant in our monthly billings. Because they're starting, we're starting to ask questions, uh, ask questions.
And I think going forward with, like I said, the district one sanitary sewer review. Um, if we end up reviewing, if we end up doing two and three, if that does get approved and we wanna go forward. Scott and I have already talked about, we don't need to spend a ton of time reviewing. We only need, they, you know, what is our intention going into it? Do we need a full scope, massive explanation of every single leak if we're planning on lining the whole? Yes. And so I think that's where we just need to be a little bit more, um, proactive on our end before engaging WSB. And I know that we'll be working with Sean a little bit as well, as far as like GIS mapping, maybe that's something we can include WSB on. Like we said, next meeting, um, maybe have them send us some of the slides and give us an opportunity to present it to council. Rather than paying for a consultant to sit here during a meeting and present the slides for us, you know?
And I think we talked about strategies for, rather than having several work sessions about a potential project. Let's do a better job of preparing going into that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we don't wanna go into a work session to show you a lot of videos. Let's go into a work session, show you two or three of the worst, um, and then, you know, be providing scenarios, that kind of thing moving forward. So, um, making the most of the time that we are using, I, I think we're.
Now, one other thing, one other thing I would like to point out, um, I think sometimes the percentages are skewed when we're looking at the budget reports. That's why I actually go line by line and, and look for items that I feel are important to mention. Specifically on page forty-four, when we were talking about the sewer fund engineering fees being at twelve hundred percent over budget. We need to keep in mind that the budget itself is only a thousand. And so.
Right.
And a normal year, we would have only spent a thousand dollars in our sewer engineering costs. But this year adding a district one and an, um, Met Council INI plan, we could have probably anticipated right away. We were never gonna be able to stay under that thousand. Um, I think the billable rate's two hundred dollars. So it would have been, it would have been really, really hard to stay under that thousand. And so I think we have to look not just at the percentage, but also, um, actual costs, so.
On a positive note, the sanitary sewer billings have been a hundred and eighty thousand a year to date and the budget was two oh eight.
Yes. Now, um, I was doing my best guess on how much water would be used this year. And if you recall, we moved a lot of the costs, the expense out and into its own Met Council treatment fee. So sewer billings, I think I under, underestimated and I will be changing that for next year. I will be honest, um, if you would have asked me about two meetings ago, I would have told you my goal is probably to get that a little bit lower, to maybe lower it on the utility bills. But after seeing our results of district sewer lining, that will not happen. We will not be able to lower any utility bills in the sewer fund at all, even given the increase that's gonna have to come from the Met Council new fee. It just isn't feasible to try to cover the amount of, um, infrastructure that we need repaired, so. But yes, I will do a better job next year at estimating.
No, that's a, that's, it's a pleasant surprise.
I mean, you did bring up Met Council, a little bit off here, but what's the, the lag on our Met Council bill? Isn't there like a?
Two years.
It's a two-year lag.
So this one, this is gonna be a disaster right now. Yeah, yeah, this rainy season is gonna be up for twenty-eight?
Uh, well, he was saying twenty-seven.
It's gonna be twenty, it's gonna, it's a look back period, so, and it's a half a year, so it's like July to June.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So even if we do all these repairs.
I'd say this year is gonna be brutal, so.
So twenty-seven is when this will show up as?
Guessing twenty-seven.
Cause this was.
And it could even be twenty-eight. It could be the twenty-seven, twenty-eight years. So even if we do a bunch of repairs, we have to still plan that we're gonna have Met Council fees for at least a year after.
So we haven't collected all of our, um, taxes.
I was, I actually made a separate note on that. I have to switch to my notes, because I didn't. Um, we, we had requested a seventy percent early advance on our property taxes. Otherwise, they usually come in July. So on July seventh, we had a two hundred and forty thousand dollar deposit into the, um, current ad taxes. And then an initial thirty-five thousand dollars in the fiscal disparities.
Where is this?
Um, I'm sorry, page.
Thirty-seven?
Yes, I made my notes on the bottom of my sheet, so. So yes, we're not quite at half, but that is because, um, property taxes don't usually come until July. We just had requested a advance of seventy percent early. So that was the six hundred thousand that we got.
Oh, and this is as of June thirty?
This is as of June thirtieth. So now they look right on track.
Perfect.
Do you have any other questions for me? And obviously, I know you guys don't have a lot of time, um, so if, if there's anything that comes up. And then, you know, let me know, email me. I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you might have.
You know, I know this is off point, but to, to, I, I have walked, you and I have probably walked more than anybody else, Upper Lee Lane and Lakeview. And it is a mess.
We did write those, if you recall, last, when we were talking the budget last meeting at the work session, we had talked about doing streets. And those are, the three you had listed were Lakeview, Upper Lee and Central, right? So that was already listed as a priority and added.
To twenty-six.
When we were planning on the twenty-six budget. Those were the three that we were going to.
So, and I think we talked about this last time too, to have the, all of the streets sort of reranked and all that. But we used to have a, a chart that showed like which ones were red, which ones were, you know.
I actually received, um, a quote that may have been sent out, um, earlier in April. Um, I just got a copy of it today and it was for, um, a script of services for updating the PMP. Um, but I actually forwarded it to Scott and said, do we want to spend the money on updating the PMP right now? Or do we just prioritize, we know Lakeview Central and Upper Lee are in.
Yeah, but let's look at the PMP that we have. Maybe it's from five years ago, but, but, or was it about five years?
It's from twenty-three. There's a map and a website from twenty-three.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have one.
We don't need to update that. We can.
That's what I asked, yes.
Hasn't gotten better.
Well, and that was, and I think if you remember, that wa, those three, weren't they only orange at that time in twenty-three?
No, there was red.
Oh, they were red?
Yes.
You can.
Oh, brand, no, that's red. Grand was, grand was the one that was orange.
What else was red? Was, was it just those?
Pretty much all the east side. It was, um, Glenmore.
Glenmore, there's also.
Really?
I think so.
Yeah, I was surprised by that, but Glenmore was red, I believe, yeah.
I think.
Otherwise, yeah, the three.
All right, so now we have a lot of red. Now we have to, let's look at all the red ones and then prioritize those. Which one of the red, which is the deepest red?
Absolutely.
Which is the lightest red and?
Yeah, I, I don't, it, it's my, it, it's just my personal opinion, why spend money on updating a couple of year old PMP right now? When we could be using that money to be designing a road project and trying to figure out what we can and can't do there.
And if you remember, we took the twenty twenty-three, implemented the franchise fees, have been doing the surface repairs on a lot of those other ones that don't have utilities in them. So we're getting to the point where we don't have very many of those roads left that are not gonna be impacted by full recons. So that is now, like colors have re, have changed and that's why we've done the best we could with the franchise fees. But now we're gonna have to start looking at doing a project and bonding.
So, by the way, what they did up on County Road Six was not an oil and, and rock like you were saying. That was, that's pavement, even though it's kind of a weird looking, yeah, but it's asphalt, but it's kind of this coarse asphalt. I was, I've, I've always wondered, it's like, is this the finished course or maybe it is? I thought maybe there was gonna be still a layer.
Before that course?
No, no, I haven't. So that's, I don't know what, if that's a process, that's, you know, lower cost or something. But that's, there's asphalt there that's, you know, was laid on pretty thick.
Did they sweep that at all?
No, that, I don't think that's swept. That's.
That one won't be, no, but your typical, you know, aggregate seal.
Yeah, seal coating you sweep after a while, right?
You know.
Chip sealing, as people call it, but.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, chip sealing.
Exactly, but, um.
But I mean, and, and if, if we weren't gonna do something soon, then yeah, maybe we would do something like that to buy us another year or two. But I think we need to prioritize those streets.
I think we need to get the culvert to, the culvert fixed too, because I think that's, um, like people keep putting in the driveways, because they don't know what's gonna happen with the culvert.
One thing they'll have to understand is the road's gonna get wider. It's gonna get curb and gutter and they're gonna lose some of their front yard.
Well, does it have to be curb and gutter? Does it have to get wider?
Yeah, does it have to be?
Well, it won't meet city standards, so.
But Martha Lane isn't city standards either, so I, I live on.
Creekside isn't city standards.
Neither is Watertown.
Right. Well, Watertown was supposed to be, right? Watertown was supposed to be. And the city standard is to control surface water, right? So remember, we, but staff got voted against and we made a, made a ditch and people complained about the ditch. And it flooded people's driveway.
Where, on Watertown?
Yeah, so everywhere, everywhere from, was it Harrington West is a ditch.
Well, they didn't want a curb.
I think I remember.
Right, cause they went against city standard, council went against that recommendation.
They wanted it to be a rural section similar to Orno, but now when you look at it, I mean, the edge of the roadway is already crumbling and all that stuff.
Yeah, but, but.
Curb and gutter would have.
But on the other hand, if we rebuilt it, did a full rebuild, but kept it as, you know, the width that it is and, and didn't go curb and gutter. At least the road surface would be greatly improved and maybe at a low, much lower cost than putting in curb and gutter.
But it'll be, it'll be, has to be replaced before your bond's done.
Yeah, I think.
But, but what's the difference in cost, I guess? You know, is, is it, if it's, is it half the cost if we didn't do curb and gutter? Is it?
Curb and gut, curb and gutter is concrete essentially, so it's linear view of concrete.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of design going, that goes into that. I mean, it's.
You're asking, is it double or is it five percent more expensive?
Yeah, I mean, if it's double, I would say maybe we should consider doing the lower cost one. If it's only ten percent difference, then yeah, then I would say let's do the curb and gutter, but.
I'd love to hear from the engineer and that, because normally I might say that like on Grand Avenue or something, but if you go over to Lakeview, it's, there's so much that's water created from the street, kind of runoff into people's yards.
But they're not, they're not complaining about, well, they're complaining about that if the culverts aren't working, but they seem, they, you know, from what Brian says, they, they seem to be, at one time, that worked, um.
There wouldn't be.
Well, in the forties, in the road that was last put, put in. So if you go to the north side of, of Lakeview, it is by the apartments, it is curb and gutter the first hundred and fifty feet.
Is that when they used the water and then we did the pass?
So it drops right off at Central.
Part of it is, like, curb and gutter already?
Correct, right in front, almost right before.
But would we widen that part of it too?
It already is a way. It's already been done.
But after Holtman's House?
Holtman's House narrows down and then starts hitting the ditches and culverts.
Yeah.
So south to Central, right? Right by Central, I think is where it ends with the curb and gutter.
It's, it's twenty-four feet. Do you think there is the standard width or, you know, that's what you said, but.
They said it was twenty-two, but I don't know if ours is twenty-four.
So are you saying, like, we would put storm sewers in this too?
We should. There's not a single thing, there, that's all surface drain, all the way down, upper Lee and everything. It is, that's the worst case scenario.
Upper Lee looks awful.
But that's, that's, now you're adding even more costs, you know, that, that.
I don't wanna do it again for fifty years. We're bonding for it.
Needs to be done right the first time, I think, because I, I talked to residents about this Watertown thing and, uh, you could, you know, bailing out their yard and flooding.
Which Watertown?
You know, you know.
By the other end, by Orno?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We better be good about communicating what, uh, how this is gonna encroach on folks' yards.
Well, if we, I mean, even if you, if you decide, let's say the twenty-two, three feet, there's a twenty-four feet, you're probably gonna get your foot on each side for your curb and gutter. You're gonna grade that ditch anyways and remove the culvert, so you're really not gonna be encroaching. You're gonna grade that ditch anyways and remove the culvert, so you're really not gonna be encroaching too far unless you wanna go wider.
Yeah, okay.
So you're gonna, you're gonna end up probably having a curb, you're gonna still have to have the ditches, you're gonna have to have that mostly level. Because I think that one's gonna be dug down, because the surface underneath it is like sand. There's no, there's no surface underneath, there's a support of road, so you're gonna be digging down and putting back in. It's gonna, it's gonna be.
We should take a field trip to look at these, this one, because it is.
Session or something.
Yeah, so, like, like you said, you've walked it, you've probably walked it fifty times, but you're not quite understanding what maybe will have to be done when you start looking.
No, I don't, but I know, I know that um you look at it and it's like, there's more puddles in the road.
There's really sand under there?
It, it, so if you, there was core drills, if you remember, there was no, like, so, one, the asphalt's maybe only what, maybe inch and a half to three inches thick throughout the whole thing. And there's no sub underneath it. So what I'm thinking happened was, back in the day, when it was early forties, they kept doing the um, the sealant. With the trap rock and kept doing layers of that, so that's how you got to where you're at, that was, but there's no integrity held together. There was nothing keeping it from blowing apart.
Where could we realistically tackle this?
When?
Yeah, when, I mean, is this?
We do it by, well, it's, again, what's gonna be priority, are we gonna talk about INI, are we gonna talk about road replacement? Because they're both gonna cost quite a bit, they're all gonna cost a bunch of money, so um.
Well, the INI, we at least have some money to use, the TIF money.
Well, District One is sending about a million dollars to fix INI. And we only have, what, six-hundred thousand, maybe four-hundred thousand for that?
Uh, four-hundred are restricted.
Alright, what's it gonna cost to?
The whole city's probably four million.
Oh, what's it gonna cost to redo uh Lake and?
Probably four million.
And that we would bond for?
We did twelve million for a grand.
Eleven million for grand and, and Lakeview included.
Lakeville was on that one still too.
Scott, do we currently in Central have the same road bed issue that?
They're gonna be, well, they're gonna drainage issues and width issues. I can't promise, I don't know what their subgrade is, I don't remember where those cores were drawn, I know that there was six different cores, if not more.
Yes.
Along that whole corridor, and there, we have the results, I just haven't, not off the top of my brain, where they were at. I just know that the sub grade underneath will have to be pulled out.
Is all of Upper Lee Lane bad, or just um where it's around the cur, when it's?
There's the map, if you wanna look it up, yeah.
Yeah, the whole thing, so actually, is that Upper Lee on that far side, Upper Lee is even worse than Lakeview.
This part right here of Upper Lee is the worst, I think.
Because there's no stormwater at all in that area, it's all surface drain.
The upper part of Upper Lee?
Yes, but they do, you need the stormwater to protect the life of your street, you just, you know, I mean. And to have less ongoing maintenance of things like.
Did you see, can you see that?
Such like that, you have to do the roads right, and that way we're not relying on public works to do repairs. Um, let's do it right in the first place, and that's the struggle. But I was just wondering if we could deal with a recon on Lakeview, but just a reclamation of some sort on Upper Lee and.
No.
Central, or if they were in the same deal.
They're all full recons.
Okay.
The tillet central is orange, but.
Um, so the, uh, Lakeview, how mu, in Upper Lee, if, wha, what percentage could we bond, uh, bond for? Or kind of um, um.
All of it?
That's looking at an assessment.
Not assessment, assessment.
Yeah, it would have to be, there's a, there's a percentage, but I don't remember off the top of my head, but you would do that as the full project with the utilities.
The assessment just pays for what, ten percent of it or something?
Ten percent?
There's a, there's a percentage threshold.
It's not a big percent.
No, it's a policy that is set, and it's all by linear feet of the property lines and stuff like that too, so.
How, what's the utility story under these?
Um, I think, if I, if I remember all right, there's lines, not a whole lot in Upper Lee, but I think they're all down Lakeview. Um, you'd wanna replace those anyways, especially if we're doing a storm on Upper Lee also, so I think they're all gonna tie together. But I don't think there's anything on Upper Lee, but the road is so bad that you're not gonna be able to do a millon overlay.
So you think it's a four-million-dollar project?
That, I guess linear feet on that one, I think it'll be a little bit less, I think it'll be a little bit less.
Three million?
Probably closer to three. I just don't know what it will take to redo that subgrade, but.
And, and so we would bond for what, most of that, uh, or, well, there's sets for part of it, that, do we have anything in the PMP? Budget?
So you could do what?
So, I mean, we're, it's still pretty small, it's four-hundred thousand.
Like two thousand twenty-six.
Which will be for the surface, yep, and then like you said.
Say, say again?
Is that for Lynderwood though, is that, it's part of that grant to pay for Lynderwood this year?
It is, yes, I apologize.
So they're probably only.
That go to Lynderwood?
Three hundred of it, two-hundred-and-twenty, so you'll have a couple hundred thousand if we're not doing the. Kind of are limited now on just surface replacement, those will now start, the franchise fees fees will start building up for at least the next year.
Where do, where do I see the franchise fees on the revenue?
Those go into the um pavement management fund.
Oh, not in the general fund, okay.
Nope, they don't go into the general fund.
It's under cash balance page.
We had those earmarked.
What page is that on?
Um, page thirty-six, I wrote them down.
So four-hundred and thirteen?
Yep, four-hundred and thirty-two.
So there's gonna be maybe a couple hundred thousand in there still at the end of, after Lynderwood.
Yeah, well, how much annually goes into that from the, from the franchise?
This is only, we've only had them for about two years, so.
It's like fifty thousand a quarter, sixty thousand a quarter.
So.
About two hundred.
Two-hundred thousand a year into the pavement management plan from franchise fees. Is there any other source of rev, you know, transfer into that?
That also includes cell tower revenue.
Yes.
Cell tower revenue, okay.
And franchise fees goes into that fund.
So this is probably a good snapshot of, because we didn't do any projects last year that I can think of that even came out of that, so this is probably a good, a good snapshot of what two years would look like.
Two years?
Or, yeah, about a year and, a year and. Because I think we've already received.
Because you have, we already did Meadowview, Meadow, and, yeah.
I mean, if we, if we had the money, you know, there wasn't an issue, we could, could we do this next year?
I still think we should do it next year.
Well, that's what I'm saying too, I mean, can you, can you go through the bonding process and the design and actual start to do the work in twenty-six?
Well, right now, we're sitting, the city's sitting in a really good debt, debt position, and we've been paying off our debt. And more and more will be, it will be falling off in the next few years here. Um, and Scott and I, when we met today with WSB talking about the sewer lining project. At one point, we had just asked, what would it take to do the entire city, about four million? And we're looking at grants and things like that, but it would last fifty years, we're to the point where maybe we're, we're need to start bonding for the projects as a whole?
One.
Would ju, start bonding these projects, yes, it'd be large.
Bonding for the sewer lining, bonding for the.
Yes, yes, and then use our capital, we could actually be us, using some of this capital fund that we've, our rainy day fund.
Yeah.
Um, as, nec, if, if we needed, if we got in a pickle and we needed to have.
Bond payment.
A bond payment or something, I just think that.
So not use any of that to actually go towards the projects, but.
Rates are fine, I think bond it, and we're getting, we're still getting good rate on return on what's invested, I think we bond it, we, we do the projects, we do them right. And we stop kicking the can, and then.
I'm the first one to say I don't like taking out loans, but.
It's time.
Philosophy usually says if you can't make enough cash to have and pay for it in cash, then you have to bond because the people have been paying taxes for so long and not getting the result out of it. So that's kind of how the, the bonding process, some people like to justify, so um. And we're getting to the point where we're at catastrophic, I think it's, it's, especially for the sewer lining. Um, and the goal with that would be, do it all at once, make a twenty-five-year-old, because, you know, say it's four million dollars. We could do a revenue gener, um sewer revenue bond, which would be based on usage, would, would pay back the, the loan. And then, um, in the cure and place process, essentially is a brand-new pipe that is more engineered to be about fifty years now. So the goal is like, we'll hopefully never have to worry about line replacement for the next fifty years. So it's gonna be one time ripping off a Band-Aid, that's gonna hurt, but the goal also be is if our INI goes down, the more cash will be coming in to pay off the debt.
Would, would be paid back through sewer rates?
Correct.
Correct.
So sewer rates would go up quite a bit.
I, well, yes and no, like I, like we were talking about, already my sewer rates, I didn't, we, we've already added the Met Council fee on, on In-N-Out, which. That's very easy for residents to see that, we're not keeping any of that money, it's going directly to, to the Met Council. But because we did that, now the money we were getting for sewer fees, we have more of that on hand, because we're not paying the Met Council. You know, portion out of it.
The goal is to pay Met Council less and pay more towards the.
Yeah, but there's that two-year lag too, so there's gonna be a couple years of like.
There'll be, yeah.
I think it's just.
Do we know, by the way, what surrounding communities paid a Met Council, like Maple Plain?
I have the whole list.
A list.
Comparable to what we're paying, or?
No.
We're high.
We're, we're super high.
Why are we so high?
Because we'll show you the pictures.
Yeah, the pictures are really, really bad.
And, and so one thing, you know, we'll have to push pretty hard is individuals lining their own personal line from the house to the road.
Can you see, detect that on the pictures?
Oh, yeah, it is, it is, it's coming in like a fountain.
Oh, wow.
Ordnance and inspection process for that.
And we've got some.
So when you show us these pictures, can we line those worst ones first, that it would help ease a little bit?
We were going to, but we don't think it's gonna be cost beneficial, because.
Mobilization.
To just get, because then your spot, your spot fixing, and they mentioned that.
About, you know, taking a, a chunk out of the Met Council fee, that, you know.
But then you're, you're three years down the road, and like you, like Jeff had mentioned, um, if you start doing spot fixes. Then pretty soon those are gonna be deteriorating, well, the, the problems are gonna.
Have them start in the worst area?
Because would they get backflow and interfere, Eddie currents and all that stuff if they just line it partially, I don't know.
Well, what you'll see is, right now, District One, you'll get the report that shows Priority One, Priority Two, Priority Three. Then we're gonna do, then we're gonna televise District Two and Three, so we can get Priority One, Two, or Three, so maybe go.
Within those districts.
It's in those districts, so then make your scene, maybe, maybe fiscally it makes more sense to do like, just say a million dollars and hit Priority One in all three districts. Next year, maybe do a different one, and next year do another one, like, so that we can at least get it done.
Or when we get the quotes, ask, ask the, them, okay, because think about it, when they're putting the line in, if, how much money is it gonna cost for them to put it in?
Come back.
Stop, put it in, you know, okay, get over to this paint, you know, do this section, stop, do this section versus just go?
Remember though, that, I mean, the quotes that we're talking about is actually, the first, the first step is to get quotes for televising the district. Ha, the districts have you go through an approval process for the televising, get that done. Then we can ascertain the priority ones in each of the districts, find out where those are, what they are, and how badly they're contributing to the situation. Then see how far we can build the project with that information, but we need complete data to do it.
Yep.
And we need to get those districts televised.
And maybe get, when they're quoting projects, tell us, tell us what it would cost us to do, the whole thing versus, you know.
And we'll do that when we ask for the bids.
Do you know what I mean, like, ask for the bids of, in different things, to make an educated decision.
So we look at the city responsibility for these lines versus private, is it roughly fifty-fifty?
I don't think so. Depending, different sections, right, so depending on what they.
I mean, just like total number of feet of line.
Um, it'll be close, it will be close, but.
It's not just feet, it's, it's volume.
Yeah.
Volume and quality, so like, if your PVC pipes on the city side are probably in good shape, right? Not so much contribution, but the private lines coming in, every connection is vulnerable, right? It's when you have, it's when you have the clay pipes that have six-foot sections and every section is blowing apart, that is city side. So like, you could say fifty-fifty, because, but they're also gonna have connections going into the clay pipe, so like, it all depends on quality and.
So to that point though, when they're doing a lining project, WSB would recommend that you're actually uh. Doing a Y, so you're not just doing the line, you're also doing the private connections, just a tiny little piece there to cover that.
Is that where most of it comes out?
Yeah.
At the junction?
And it was interesting, because of the videos that we saw today, only one of those was actually a private service gusher, the rest of them were all ours.
Okay.
So they were offsets and roots and things like that, only one of the examples we saw today was a private service connection, but they used that to explain.
They just say that ninety-nine percent of them are all doing that kind of thing.
Well, and that's, I'm trying to just try to make the mental model of like, if the city take, does a hundred percent of what we can do, we've already done one district. So there's some percentage done, if we did all the city stuff, what fraction of the problems do we solve?
Well, so there's gonna be multiple points to that too, so we're gonna approve us doing something, right? The second breath is Met Council has grants for the private citizens to do their own lines, right, so you can qualify for that. And then we turn around and say, okay, maybe the point of sale ordinance and models and all that stuff that we talk about need to be implemented too on the same date. However you wanna say it, because they now need to be forced to fix their system some shape or form. Because ours is getting to the point where it's a hundred percent fixed, but now everybody else is still contributing to our system.
When, if the city does a hundred percent of the city, how much does that, what percentage uh does that take care of the problem, I mean, in other words.
We'll find out when we have more data to start, but.
And then, is it more than half, is, 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 is the Met Council payment is more than half of that due to the city's uh sewer?
Without seeing the results of the conditions of those two districts, we don't know.
And the other thing I think we have to be careful of, um, Met Council has a budget just like every other area. And if you look at our personal property taxes and the changes it's had in the last ten years. But we don't have ten years of excess revenue sitting around, we're act, our expenses are going up too, so at Met Council, we're gonna be doing all this work. I think it's, I think it's important to say, yes, that Met Council fee may not go down, our, our INI might go down. But do you know what I mean, I don't think it's gonna be a dollar-for-dollar savings, because I think as.
I know, their, their regular fee is gonna go up, but.
Completely, yes, and I think as more, as more cities start to be responsible, they're gonna have to get their money somewhere else, you know, as well. And so I just think we have to be, I think it's, we're gonna see a trend, but it, those calculations are very easy to tell.
Yeah, but if we don't do it, instead of paying X, we're gonna be paying three X.
One hundred, yes.
Yeah.
And then, okay, and then when they televise, I'm assuming if there's a private resident gusher, you're going down the street, and it's like, okay, I marked that house.
Yeah, our report was this thick, so they, they take, they ding.
How could you see the pri, private lines?
Because there's a camera, so they're like.
They're looking up and down these lines, they're not going up through the line.
No, they just can, they just show it coming in to the pipe, that's the Y that Jeanette was talking about. So you can see the connection, and you can see the circle kind of cut in, you can see all the ruts, you can see the water coming in, you can see water coming down the line. So essentially, if you see rust, it means it's got a hole in it, right, so um, so yeah, I mean, they'll look, also they'll see water flows, and they, so that they data point everything. And they can, it's like, moments of quick thing, like they could data point it location, they tell you where it's at in the line of, from manhole to manhole, and they give you the GPS location. So it just creates a report, and I swear it was probably about this thick of all the incidences that are on line. Well, that, well, that was, the televiser report, it was not the televising, review by WSB, yes.
How, how long does PVC last?
That one's usually a longer time, so like, you know, you're still looking at your thirty years. But some of the stuff has been in the ground for more than thirty years too, I think, but PVC.
Does clay uh last longer or no?
No, no, that, that's, they're saying they were like, there's, used to be other stuff that was made out of paper for their sewer lines that are in some communities, so.
Alright, well, that was a good second quarter financial report. Um, no, these are, yeah, as Phil strongly read, uh.
Costs are high.
Moving on these projects and ro, and the Lakeview and Upper Lee and, and sewer projects as well, so. You envision bringing something back to us in a, in a couple of meetings, or?
Um, next meeting, it's our goal, Jeanette and I were, we put it as a placeholder, next meeting, we're hoping to talk about the sewer lining in detail. Once we have a little bit more information.
But the televising.
The televising, well, and, we were also gonna talk about the lining and why we felt the televising was necessary. Yeah, so that was one of the things we're talking about, I don't have streets on my radar right now.
So the Met Council fee?
Show you a couple videos and just to highlight the importance of televising the other districts.
Yes, why we came to that conclusion.
So, um, I know that our Met Council fees are going up by like fourfold or twice, twofold?
Yeah, a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand?
To four hundred, it's, yeah, over a hundred, it's over a hundred, because we were almost double where we were last year.
So the base fee, are we gonna divide it by the number of?
Try.
Okay, and so that's how much the, it's gonna go up, but the sewer?
It will go up a lot, yes, and so I'll probably go on vacation when those first bills come out. So I'll get a lot of phone calls, but we'll do our best to communicate with residents, um, and obviously take that into account when we are looking at other fees. So I'll get a lot of phone calls. But we'll do our best to communicate with residents, um, and obviously take that into account when we are looking at other fees. Like I said, we can't really lower anything right now, but we're definitely gonna be mindful of the impact that the Met Council fee is gonna have on all the residents when we're looking at other, other rates, so.
And that will also hopefully trigger some people to realize that they should maybe look at getting their own personalized televised.
And we're talking about incentive and, uh, utility bill incentives for people that do. So that's, we're just throwing around ideas to, um, make this community, you know, a community wide improvement. So we'll see.
So roughly for a private line, how la, how much has it costed?
I have no idea.
How do we see the lapse permit?
The permit that just got done for the private line, um, was that televising or lining?
No, it was actually a lining project. I.
Thirty-five hundred bucks?
No, I have the permit, I can do it.
Well, were you saying something about getting moving on?
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, giving support, uh, to, to staff to move forward with these ideas and bring them to council. And if, if you think we benefit from having like a, a walking work session, you know, where we go over to Lakeview or something and just, you know, educate us from Sean or, or whether it's Jeff or somebody to kind of show us what's interesting, curb and gutter, a good point.
Too expensive for Jeff, maybe Sean.
That's not a bad idea. It's pretty much across the bridge. We're quick to, quick to get there.
We're all on salary. Get us.
Yes. All right, and Jeanette's back with something now. I know we gotta get to Jim here. He's been waiting patiently all this time.
So you need a motion to receive? Is that right?
Yes, please.
All right, um, you ready?
Oh, yeah, go for it.
Okay, uh, motion to receive second quarter twenty-five revenues expenditures as of June thirtieth, twenty-five as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Jeanette, did you get, find out the is or not yet?
Yeah, this was, uh, our residential service, um, installing seventy-six feet of, um, orange and six inch, it looks like, CIPV sewer liner. Per city specs and requirements, no right of way work. So they didn't have to do a bunch of excavation. And the project valuation quoted was seventy-four forty-five.
All right, interesting. And how do you even get into that if it's not, it can't come into like a manhole? Can they have to dig up your yard or something if they're doing a private one or?
Hmm, I think they dig right down by the, let's just be outside the right of way, cause up to right of way is the city's responsibility. So they dig down in line in that direction.
Can they come in from the inside?
I don't know if they can.
We were actually looking with, we were trying to WSB, when we do our project, we might offer to residents at that time if they were, if they were interested. There might be cost savings at that time while we're doing ours.
A little masculine along with giving all the grant application stuff for the personal grant too. So like, big package.
Um, we're not a hundred percent sure how that would work. We're gonna work, yeah, we're gonna try to, like I said, we're gonna try to work with residents as much as possible to help them make this process easier if they're interested.
Yeah, so anyone, roads are redone like that, don't they? Oftentimes residents get a choice to redo their driveways with the contractor, you know? All right, again, thank you for your report. All right, with that, we'll move on to item seven B. Lease between the city and this, and the Lake Minnetonka Communications Commission for use of office space in the city's public works building. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, and thank you for having me this evening.
Yes, glad you could attend. Are you kicking this off, Scott? Are we just, were, were you going straight to Jim?
Sure, I can kick it off. So this has been an item on the agenda that has been approved by the council in the past. This was looked at and approved back in January of twenty twenty-four. Um, this was for the LMCC to rent out a section in the lower half of Public Works Building. In your packet is the original plus updated tract changes that are, um, some of the items that are related to just timing and dates updating in there. But, um, back in January, the sale fell through of their building. And now it sounds like they're on track to sell their building again. So they're wanting to approach this lease again. So I can.
Yeah, back in February of twenty twenty-four, when we thought we had a sale in hand and we were right on the, we already had a purchase agreement, we were moving forward with you folks. I had already signed contracts with a contractor to start refurbishing the space. When our buyer found out he had stage four pancreatic cancer and died eleven days later. Needless to say, that put kind of a kibosh on our sale. Um, we have been working with a realtor since then. Uh, we went through an appraisal process. We have had numerous less than reasonable offers. I would consider anything that's at or close to fifty percent of what our appraisal is on our building, not a good offer. Uh, we actually countered a couple of those, uh, with what we felt was a reasonable discount. And the, uh, second person who had one of these fairly lowball offers countered our counter offer within ten thousand dollars of what we were countering. Now, there was also, uh, there's a project going on that Hennepin County is doing on our road. Uh, and they are going to be leasing some easement space from us for two years. And, uh, they cut us a check for twelve thousand dollars on that. And the new buyer, uh, was happy with their reduced, their, their bid, which was ten thousand under ours if we kept that twelve thousand dollars. So we met as, uh, with our executive committee who, uh, approved this. And, uh, we are in the process of signing the purchase agreement right now. Uh, we just got it back from our lawyer, uh, today, who had just a couple of minor changes. I forwarded those to our, uh, realtor and we're hoping to be signing something, if not this week, at the beginning of next week. And hopefully at that point, we can come to terms here with you folks, cause I'd love to get my construction crew in there. Uh, he says he has a lot of what he calls summer labor available, which are generally high school kids. And they could be used to, uh, take out ceiling tiles, remove carpeting, remove, uh, wallpaper from the walls and help, uh, add a lesser cost for our construction guy. And hopefully that can get things done a little bit quicker. Uh, we are hopeful that if everything moves in the direction that it is, we would be looking at, uh, uh, coming in somewhere between November first and November fifteenth, where we would begin occupying the space.
Nice. That's great. Well, congratulations on getting an offer and, and after all that time. I can't believe that's been January twenty twenty. We were talking about that.
Well, and, and. Well, thanks really for being so patient with us. It's been a very difficult, uh, period of time. It, uh, all of this started back in March of twenty twenty-three when we held our, uh, cable TV summit and explained to mayors and city administrators and commissioners that we're gonna run out of money here at a certain point due to cord cutting. And, uh, after Jerry's offer came off the table, uh, we have now put into place a change in our business model, which, uh, technically has already gone into effect, but you'll see the major effects happen at the end of this year. Uh, we are changing our business model from, uh, myself as the operations manager and Tyler as our productions manager. We're gonna become a one horse wonder. And, uh, it only makes sense to put the younger man, who's got seventeen years worth of experience with us, in charge of this. And let the person who's a little, uh, long in tooth and gray affair or that Harry's got left to, uh, who's had a great career at the LMCC, by the way. I've been there almost twenty-five years now. And, uh, it'll be time for me to find other endeavors at the end of this year. I will be stepping away. But one of my last things that I'd really like to get accomplished for Tyler, because I think it would be overwhelming and move, take on this challenge that he's gonna be running the whole show over there. Uh, I'd really like to try and get us done with this and get us into the place before the end of this year.
And you were under a little bit of a constraint based on the purchase agreement a little bit too, because, um, the closing date?
Uh, yes, um, and, and we had asked for, uh, um, a, they wanted thirty days due diligence. We asked for fifteen. Um, they are not able to do that because they are planning on taking a little, carrying a little debt in their purchase. And they need the additional time to work with a bank to get that all figured out.
And then you have a little bit of a delay before you have to be out of the building after the close.
That's, that's correct. Yep, yeah, ninety days after, uh, uh, the thirty day due diligence period is over, we need to be out of our building and location.
Are you leasing it back then for those ninety days?
Uh, that was an option, uh, but no, we are not. That gave us up to a hundred and twenty days if we chose.
Oh, so you're actually gonna close on it in November then, could close the sale?
That's correct. Once we sign the purchase agreement and the thirty day due diligence is over, there's ten thousand dollars in easement, as well as another seventy thousand dollars that they will add to that fund. That will actually cover our costs of refurbishing the Long Lake space.
And, and if they, um, back out at that time, they, they relinquish that deposit money then?
That's correct. Yeah. So they, they've got, it, it's a big carrot for them. So, um, what I've seen with the purchase agreement, um, they are asking to, they, they are stating that they have no interest in doing a phase one or a phase two environmental. Uh, that they, uh, have no plans on, uh, uh, working with the city to change, uh, the commercial rating that it is. They're not interested in doing development. Uh, so it should be a pretty straightforward purchase.
I just think a hundred and twenty days is a long time for somebody to potentially change their mind or, or circumstances to change. So there is some risk there that you're taking on.
We understand. And our executive committee did discuss that, and we felt that this was a reasonable risk. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for that, um, update and presentation, Jim. Any other questions for Jim or Scott? I maintain a motion on this one.
Well, I have a question for Scott. On the, on the rent amount, it was twelve fifty per month. That was the amount back in January twenty twenty-four and, and we're keeping that, this, this, that same starting point, even though we were gonna have a five percent increase per year after that. I mean, does the, does it, um, you know, one might think that we should be starting at, you know, an adjusted amount because two years have gone by, or by the time they move in, two years will, almost will have gone by.
Right. And I know that was something that Jim was hoping that we could keep at the same rate, um, with the move in period while he's, you know, trying to get everything ramped up. So that's one of those items that is always up for debate or conversation with the council.
Please keep in mind that the situation that, what put us in this situation to start with is cord cutting. And our funding has dropped sixty-five percent in the last seven years. Uh, we've had to make some dr- drastic changes. Um, I'm all for the five percent escalator in there. Uh, we just ask that we get a chance to get in there and, uh, get our feet wet before you start that.
Cause would the fir, would the first five percent increase occur like, you know, a month later on the journey?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, I see, sure, okay.
Year first in twenty twenty-seven.
So that when they move in, um, in twenty twenty-six, so the first year will be kind of that base rate and then it'll?
Yeah, so they'll, they'll stay November and December, right? We'll stay at the twelve fifty. All twenty twenty-six will be the twelve fifty. Twenty-seven, January one will be the five percent escalator.
And so they're doing some renovations on it? So, and so that, is that a, a value added?
Correct. Yeah. And that's why the ra, the rent is what rent, it's reasonable, because they're putting cash in to the building.
We're putting eighty thousand dollars into that building, so.
That's, that's why I, I didn't feel like it was a big issue to change it if, or make it up. Hold on, if you guys chose, if that's understandable.
I think I should sus- sustain from voting just cause I'm on both boards.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm on the.
Understand that. Yeah. She's on our executive committee, so.
Right, right. Okay. I think we probably pull off the three of us then. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm thinking, you know, this is revenue that we have, we haven't receiving before. This is not, you know, this is new revenue for our city. And I know they've been through a lot financially, as Jim mentioned, so I guess I'm okay with, with waiting till twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, I don't have a strong opinion about it. I just brought it up because I, I just noticed that, you know, that, that we were two years later and yet it was the same.
Yeah, I'm, the only reason I also too is that the cost probably a little bit different from two years ago too for the renovations. So I.
Oh, for them, you mean?
Right.
Costs more.
Right.
Yeah, I'm fine with the numbers. I, I see the point being two years later, but I'm fine with this number myself as written.
All right, you wanna make a motion, anybody?
Um, I will. What are we at here? Um, I'll make a, make sure I got the right one. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the contract lease between the city of Long Lake and, uh, Lake Minnetonka. Cable Commission to allow the LMCC to rent office space in Public Works Building located at twenty-one forty-five Daniel Street and authorize the city admin to execute said contract.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed, nay. And then abstention, consumer quality. All right, so I passes. Congratulations, Jim, and we look forward to.
Thank you. I'll be contacting my contractor and we'll see how quickly we can get him started over there. We're very excited.
So, okay, so, um, they start paying when they move in or when they start construction on it?
Uh, I think it shows that when they take, uh, when they start moving in.
That's my understanding, is when we move in.
Well, as I got you here, any updates on, uh, Midco? Are they ahead of schedule, behind schedule?
Oh, geez, you know, I actually have a whole presentation.
Oh.
Got ten or fifteen minutes.
Are you serious?
I'm serious.
I've got, I've got, uh, Midco flags in my yard. Does everybody have those?
I don't, but I've seen them all over. It's been busy. I think we had a, a gas leak.
Gas leak, didn't we?
Yeah.
We could go cause of that and.
They're the ones that cut, that hit the line. I signed up for Midco. I just don't know how they're gonna get it to my house.
Were you signed up already?
Well, I, I did the pre-sign up thing. They said end of July, but, uh, I don't think they're getting it in my.
You just gave it costs and everything? Yeah, then take out the connector, yep.
Yeah, there's, yeah, you can go to their page and sign up. They go up to like five gig. It's ridiculous speed. But the price, it was linear after.
Yeah.
Sure. But like I said, one, one gig pre-signups, I don't know. I'm not expecting it to go in in, in July though.
No.
A lot of, a lot of work ahead.
I wondered how they.
Think it showed June for you.
Put the lines in, do they?
They, yeah.
Slit a.
A lot of boring, I think, right?
Really?
Seen some boring machines for some of them, but some I think there's underground kinda, uh, conduit or pipes they can use.
Maybe they can line our sewers while.
I like the way you think.
They have the equipment.
Cost efficient.
You might nick something.
Maybe put fiber optic in our sewers. How about that?
I'll take it.
Yeah.
Then we can track stuff.
It's waterproof.
Accounting.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
There you go.
Look at this, wow.
Okay, um, thanks for having me, by the way. Uh, this is a very basic update, brings you up to speed with what's going on at the LMCC, uh, right now, uh, in twenty twenty-five. Uh, the LMCC was formed, uh, in nineteen eighty-four as a joint powers agreement. Our cities recognized that they could accomplish more as a group than they could on their own. That by joining together, they could provide public access, educational access, and government access for their community. The LMCC is located at four zero seven one Sunset Drive in beautiful Spring Park, Minnesota. Soon to be, uh, twenty-one forty-five Daniel Street in Long Lake. The LMCC performs a number of functions for the community, franchise administration, which includes franchise oversight, customer complaints. And we also operate a full PEG facility providing access to cable channels for public access on our channels twelve and twenty-one. Educational access on our channels twelve and twenty, and government access on channels eight and twenty. But do the services cost our member cities? Our services don't cost our member cities anything. How's the, oops, see? How is the LMCC funded? Well, we're funded in a couple of different ways. The first is our franchise fees, which is five percent of MediaCom's revenue. The other is a PEG fee, which is a dollar ninety-nine per customer, uh, per month. Uh, there are two things that those monies can be used for. The, uh, franchise fees, we can spend on pretty much anything. But the PEG fees can only be spent on things that help us create programming. So that would be any of our, uh, hard costs for equipment, capital purchases, uh, and for the people that their job is only to create programming. Those would be our contract producers such as Mark or tonight Mario, who's recording their meetings. Uh, so those are things that we can spend our PEG funds on.
I think you jumped ahead.
Yes, I sure did. Okay, and there's our PEG fees. Uh, what's new at the LMCC? You guys just mentioned it, Midco. I sent out this press release a couple of weeks ago, uh, talks about when Midco's gonna be coming into the different areas. There, you'll see on the left-hand side, a list of all of our member cities. Uh, and right now, uh, we've got, uh, Independence, Long Lake, St. Bonnie, and a portion of Shorewood that'll be completed this year. Uh, Loretto, the construction is pretty much complete. Actually, today, very exciting news, we got our first franchise check from Midco. Now, that being said, it wasn't very much money. It was less than a hundred dollars, but it was a start. So we're very excited about this. This press release also provides you with contact information with Midco. And, uh, uh, probably the biggest thing that you'll hear is you may occasionally hear concerns from people regarding the restoration. Happens when anybody goes through with fiber or is laying any trenches in your yard. Um, and if you have those problems, what I have seen from Midco is that they are Johnny on the spot to recognize that issue and help that, that resident out as soon as possible. Uh, I generally get a complaint one day and I'm watching. Uh, I generally get a complaint one day and I'm watching the interaction between Midco and that resident within twenty-four hours and they're getting those issues resolved very quickly. Uh, here is a map that shows where, uh, the buildout is going to be. Uh, the green you see in Independence is stuff that Midco did during COVID when half of Independence was still underserved and they didn't even have any means of getting high-speed internet. So Midco came in there, uh, without a franchise agreement, but only offered internet services at that time. Now that they have signed with us, you'll see the other half of Independence is being built out. Uh, Loretto, Long Lake, Saint Bonnie, and Shorewood, and all of the purple areas, those will be done next year as we wrap up construction in the Lake Minnetonka area. Uh, let's talk a little bit about funding. Cord cutting. What is cord cutting? Cord cutting is where cable TV subscribers find a new alternative in how to watch television. Today, there are numerous streaming services available to fill this need. In fact, over the eight, last eight to ten years, MediaCom has lost over fifty percent of their cable subscribers to streaming services. How's this affected LMCC funding? LMCC funding has fallen significantly. Twenty twenty, in twenty seventeen, our funding was at three hundred and sixty-seven thousand a year. In twenty twenty-five, we're down to two hundred and fifty-one thousand, which is a loss of thirty-five percent. And if we back that up a little bit, um, and what we're seeing now, most of these changes were occurring as we were seeing five and seven and eight percent go away. The last two years, we've seen eighteen percent decreases in our revenues from MediaCom. MediaCom is not promoting cable television. And last year, they were very frank in telling us that they don't care much about cable television. They have it as a, a service that's available, but internet is what's floating their boat. Uh, didn't used to be that way. If you remember in the eighties, nineties, and even in the early two thousand, it was cable television that was the driving force and internet was an additional feature that they offered. Anyways, with the current trend, if we don't change how we do business, we'll be running out of money at some point in twenty twenty-six. We are in the process of selling our building as a means of extending our mission. As you can tell, this was written before we had a purchase agreement, but the commercial realty market is currently down. That means it's time for a new business model. Beginning in July of twenty twenty-five, the LMCC will streamline, it will streamline its work by emphasizing on serving our member cities. Government meetings will become our main focus. We will continue to record, agenda parse, and post up to two meetings per month for each of our member cities, and they will continue to air on government channel eight. How will things be different? Well, seventeen-year employee Tyler Ray will take over as operations manager. His years of experience at the LMCC has prepared him for this opportunity. What happens to current operations manager Jim Lundberg? Well, Jim's currently in his twenty-fifth year at the LMCC. During that time, he's worn many hats. Many, many hats. From productions such as Lakeside News to award-winning senior si- issues show called Seniors on the Go, to public access shows such as Friendship Set to Music, as well as volunteering for nonprofit organizations. At the end of twenty twenty-five, Jim will step down as the operations manager of the LMCC. But what will he do? Oh, I'm sure. Thanks for your time, folks.
That was not beachside margarita. I was excited.
Well, I, I gave all that up about thirty years ago, so. Good, no, no, the margarita, of course.
Will, will Midco have a cable TV option or just internet?
Uh, no, Midco, uh, is, they are franchised with, franchised with us for cable television.
Okay.
So they have all of the other offerings, but, uh, they're coming into our area to sell, uh, cable television as well as, uh, a true fiber-to-the-premise internet product, so.
But they're not la- they're not laying cable, or coaxial?
It's all fiber, right?
It's all fiber. It's not this hybrid stuff that you see with MediaCom where they may be running some fiber down your main thoroughfares, but they get back into residential areas and it's still a hybrid that consists mostly of coaxial cable, which has, uh, some issues with it when it comes to grounds freezing and thawing. Uh, fiber is much more robust, can carry a much larger signal, and I think you'll see that the pricings for Midco are gonna be a little bit better than, uh, what you're seeing at MediaCom as well.
So how does the Midco TV s- aspect work as far as in your house then? If, does it go over coaxial from a, a box or something, your TV? Or is it more through?
Well, it'll come to you, into your house, uh, fiber, and then they will establish an entry point that will go, get to your router and from the router, it'll spread out to all the rest of your devices, whether it's, uh, a wireless device or a hardwired device.
Got it. And it seemed like they're on schedule in Long Lake as far as you've been hearing?
As far as I know, they are on schedule across all of our member cities.
Nice.
And wasn't there something?
I think, John, you had just mentioned that, uh, you've already got some.
Yeah, I've got the flags in my yard, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, generally, they have met with, uh, any of the cities that they're working with in twenty twenty-five. They should have met with you folks.
They're keeping Public Works very busy, yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Was there legislation pending in the Minnesota, um, House or?
There is a bill in the House. It's been there for a couple of years now. Usually takes two or three years for these type of bills to gain traction. Back in, uh, nineteen eighty-four, Minnesota was one of the first states to pass the Minnesota Cable Act, which allowed, uh, cities to franchise with, uh, cable providers and, uh, retain from them a five percent, uh, franchise fee. That's the maximum that you can get and what everybody asks for. Uh, and get five percent, uh, franchise fee on cable television products. Well, that included internet until two thousand and three, when the FCC made the decision that, well, the internet is just an information place. That doesn't do video, anything like that. Well, I think they were way off base on that because we're seeing all of our, uh, uh, video products. In fact, it's probably one of the best platforms for it because of the bandwidth that's available. But that being said, the state is working on a bill that would do something very similar to the five percent franchise fees with internet service providers. And if they were able to pass that, you would see the LMCC over a five-year period regain its robustness that it had in throughout the nineties and the two, early two thousands. Uh, you'd see us begin to expand again, start being able to cover more stuff. It's a lot easier for a business to grow again as long as they can whittle down to what they need to be to survive, and that's what we're doing this year. So, if that, uh, and if you guys, uh, talked to any of your representatives, uh, Deirdre has a copy of the, uh, bill number, and if you need it, reach out to me. I'd be happy to provide that with you. Uh, so please ask them for their support on that bill.
Great. Is there any ma- major opposition to that, uh, to?
Well, again, it's just something that generally needs to get traction. You're gonna have all of the lobbyists who have lobbied for all of these internet service providers for years. You might remember when we had the Super Bowl, uh, legislation decided that no franchise fees need to be paid for inner, any, uh, cable television provider who could provide their product wirelessly. And we were right in the middle of negotiations with, uh, Frontier at that time, and they said, well, you know, uh, let us think about this again for a while, and we never heard again from them after that.
Right.
So changes in laws do have an impact, but.
Sure.
I'm not expecting this to have an impact soon enough for me to wanna stick around or for us to be able to afford to have me stick around, I guess is the way to, way to put it, but, uh, um, again, we're downsizing to the right size. Uh, if these type of opportunities come forward in the future, it will give us a chance to expand again.
Okay.
Well, thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thanks for your efforts with all that and taking one for the team, so to speak, and, you know, I think retirement's not a bad thing. I think you'll find plenty of things to do. And, uh, it'd be good that you'll be an employee inside the city of Long Lake for at least like six weeks or so as your la- your last, uh, your last time.
And hopefully by then, enough stuff is, uh, uh, the main reason that we're starting to change our business model now is to make sure that the knowledge that I have, I can share with Tyler, put everything into place, get us moved into the newer location, change all of the accounts we've got so that come January one, when Tyler's the one in charge, he doesn't have to, to learn all of this stuff. He doesn't, he can just emphasize on doing the job that's before him.
And Jim, just so, I never realized how many contract producers LMCC has, and they mostly work through contract producers.
Yep.
That are coming out too, so they pay, and that Mark is a contract producer.
Yeah, and, uh, Mark is actually on vacation this week. He's up in Glacier National Park in Montana. Uh, subbing for him today is Mario Williams, who has subbed here before. He is a Long Lake resident and, uh, reached out to me because he was interested in, uh, uh, getting involved in this type of stuff, so.
Thank you, Mario. All right.
All right.
Great, thank you, Jim. Appreciate the bonus presentation there.
Your question was very kind.
Yes. All right, with that, we'll move on to item seven C, Fire Department Transition slash Future Fire Services News and Updates. This item's typically on our agenda. Um, nothing major report, just we continue to have good dialogue with the city of Orno uh, regarding, um, the joint powers agreement that we're working on. I think Orno last sent us a draft of their kinda edits late last week, so we're reviewing those and we'll be getting back to them as, as quick as we can. So that's kind of it for that, unless anybody else has anything to add. You know, just in general, the, um, fire departments are working really well together and great to see, especially at, uh, Buckhorn Days and the, on the five K run on Saturday morning. Both departments are working the event and, uh, uh, working intersections and things like that, so great to see the partnerships there.
And we had a fire advisory board last, meeting last week, um, that was good. Um, Chief Highland said that the, um, departments were working really well together, um, with the paid-on call from Orno Fire and working with, um, you know, the duty crew that, I'm sorry, part-time, thank you, part-time firefighters from Orno, um, and the duty crew model that they have, and then filling in with the paid-on call, uh, firefighters from Long Lake to, um, to sort of, uh, work together on, on the, the duty crew program. And, um, I know there's some issues with, uh, invoicing on that and, and needing to, um, figure out maybe some misinterpretation or different interpretations of how that's supposed to be. And that's something Charlie, you and I, I'd like to talk to Bob and Steve about next time we meet with them so that we're just not all on the same page that what we intended it to be, to be, you know, and what it is, so. But no, the fire advisory board meeting was good. Um, I felt like there was, uh, um, that things were going as well as it could while we worked out the details of the JPA.
Great, great. All right. All right, with that, we'll move on to A, Other Business. Around, Councilor Feldman?
Um, nothing, thank you.
All right, Councilor Dimek?
Nothing from me.
All right, I don't have anything else to add.
Nothing.
I'm good.
I don't have anything.
All right, Jeanette, you sure?
No, I, I actually do. I'm, uh, I'm wondering, uh, each year when we send in our Corn Days Parade Entry Form for the city councils, um, entry into the Corn Days Parade, uh, we do need a primary contact name to point to. Councilmember Dimek has graciously volunteered the last couple of years. I'm just wondering who from the council would, if you'd be willing to serve as that contact person again, um.
So, J- John, are you? Retiring from this position?
I don't know. Uh, no, I'll do it, yeah.
Just looking for anyone to volunteer.
My wife's business might have an entry as well, so.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't know if I'm gonna be tagged to, no, I'll, I'll, I'll go with the, I'll do this and I'll also walk with the, with the fire truck and.
Thank you.
Only if you want to.
No, I'll do it.
Okay.
Great, thanks. Let's put the two floats next to each other and walk in the tree.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
That's an idea.
All right, thank you for that.
I can hint at that suggestion, actually.
Oh, yeah, don't worry.
I can hint it too.
I know a guy. Well, but you've got a whole line of fire trucks first.
I know, a big one line, exactly. But we, we put the council at the back of the line of the trucks.
So, just in front of the horses. Well, uh, was Orno in it last year?
Um.
Been in it before?
I.
I don't remember last year.
Not sure about that.
You should, uh.
But I would imagine it being invited, right, right? Okay. So we gotta take her, thanks, John.
Thank you so much.
I don't, I don't remember what I had to do, to be honest. I think it was just signing a piece of paper or something.
Well, you don't even have to sign anything. It's more if someone needs to make a phone call and say, hey, here's where you're gonna need to be in the lineup.
Yeah, yeah.
Or helping to organize the council members and who's gonna buy the candy.
Yeah.
Um, I'll have a quorum notice posted for that too, so if, and if everyone from the council wants to participate in this year's parade, I know nothing would make the chamber happier, so.
So everybody put me in town that weekend, we think, or?
I'd maybe, I don't, I'd fly back, I think, that day, or maybe the day before. I don't know. I should know.
Okay.
But I don't.
So maybe, all right.
Is she going on that?
I don't pay attention so well to my wife's instructions, so.
Do we still have the banners?
Yes, last year, yeah.
Okay.
New logo.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, and on that same Corn Days note, we also are gonna go ahead and republish our same, you know, city of Long Lake and, and, uh, council, whichever one of the Corn Days you with a parade had, so we'll include that in the Corn Days insert that goes out in the Laker Pioneer closer to the event.
Great. Any else, Jeanette?
Thank you.
How about, uh, food truck on the, uh, BP station? Are they ever gonna set up there or?
I, I don't really think so. They paid for the permit and appear to have gone elsewhere.
Really?
Yeah, I don't know. I think it was because we didn't have electric for them to actually plug into, but.
How, how hard would that be to, did we talk about this before?
We did talk about it and our hope was that it would be reasonable and it was above five thousand.
Wow.
Was the quote, and that was a little.
It's a lot of rental days to make that money back. We just run an extension cord.
I bet you Primo charges less than five thousand.
Put a, through a window of your wife's building. Pay, pay them some money to buy their electricity.
Right, and I.
It can't be that much.
I had actually made the suggestion to the food truck that maybe they just wanna check with them, um, but I don't know if that happened, so.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Don't they have generators on the food truck?
Yes, but the cost of running the generator, um, gets up there, so.
Fuel, mm-hmm. Hmm.
What attracts them, and it was made very clear to me that what attracts them is plugins and facilities.
Makes sense.
Restrooms?
Uh, no, not even restrooms, although that's certainly, a portable restroom would be a big add. Um, but things like tables where people can sit and eat, available parking, refuse containers that they don't have to haul in and out from, those are the kind of things that attract them. So if you really want to attract food trucks, you have to have available electric service.
Well, the picnic tables and trash cans are easy, but.
Right.
And I, I was surprised.
The electric service is a bit more of a challenge.
So that was pulling it from where? From that, from that box on the corner or where, you know, where would they? All I know is we pulled it all out when we tore out the bu- that, the building, so you have to get the right-of-way permit and come off of the Henry County Main Line. That's underneath the twelve. Should have left one line.
And the boxes, is that the, um?
That's the street light. Oh.
Couldn't we use EDA funds for that since it's, uh, it's meant to serve that purpose in the first place?
Or use that other things?
They're there.
It's ready.
I think, I don't, I don't think it's a closed door. I think that we were starting to decide, we were weighing the cost versus interest, and so.
Yeah, but if you build it, they don't come.
Possibly.
At a hundred dollars for three days or whatever our permit is. But then now you got more trucks coming and.
I think.
And it's not just making money on it. It's just, it's a, it's a, it'd be a nice.
I think, and that's one thing that we were, we were kinda throwing around the idea, like, I think it's getting to the point where we have to figure out which fire we're dealing with, but we may, maybe looking, you know, is electricity a good idea? Long-term, but what's our big?
When we sell the building, they're gonna walk through the power.
So we keep thinking that somebody's gonna buy it soon, so we don't wanna be putting money on it.
Oh, I don't actually think that at all.
Okay, well, some people do, right? So it's like, well, we shouldn't be putting money in it if we're gonna sell it anyway, but, uh, but I think we could be sitting with it for a while and.
I actually do too.
So let's make the most of it, you know? I, I like the idea of having a couple of picnic tables there and.
So do I.
And having, but I, is there, is there, is it for sure? It's, would that be that much to put electricity in or was that just one quote or, or? That was one estimate from.
That was the one quote that typically is the lower quote, and, and it was, it was reflected. And, and it was, it was reflective of the fact that Excel would have to be involved.
But there's, so we have to have a meter and all of that, right? Because.
Mm-hmm. I think what we should do, I think this is, what we need to do is look at it in, you know, so it's versatile. So I think putting, wherever we put the electricity, we have to make sure that when there's not a food truck there, um, that the space makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? So it's, it's not a weird lot that now just has an electricity pole if a food truck comes there. So maybe think versatile, like what? Um, we're talking like a gazebo. Like, I was even looking at those brick areas. If we break the whole thing, put a gazebo, I don't know, but.
Well, if, you probably want a couple of drops, you know, not just one post. But if you're going to put it in, so that'd be like two or three or something, so that.
Yeah, we probably have to just think, like you said, we have to start accepting that it probably won't, um, be sold. What could we do so it's a multi-purpose function?
I still think we're going to get some offers, but.
The other thing we have to be.
I actually did have someone approach me again to send information to, but, um.
What kind of business was that?
It was a drive-through-only coffee shop. And I, exactly, that, that reaction was the reaction that I conveyed, that we had gone down that road before.
Start with an S or?
What's that?
Is it scooters again?
Uh, I, I suspect that was possible.
I don't have anything against them. I just don't want that for that location myself. That's my opinion. It's not, it doesn't promote pedestrian.
Amazing blended peanut butter and coffee.
Well, yeah.
I do.
For those who like coffee, I'm sure it's good, but.
But we know that the walk-up is key. And if they can't offer the walk-up and the walkability to serve our very pedestrian-oriented downtown, I think the council's been pretty consistent in your messaging to staff that that is an unattractive option. Unless we have that walkability approach. So I did mention that. And, ah, you know, I'll talk to my so-and-so and get back to you. So we'll see. So I, I.
Plus, that could, that would create, that could potentially create a big traffic issue.
Yes.
If it's a popular place, where are they all going to line up? Along the center of the boulevard? You can't queue in that area. Because you see some of these coffee shops and they have a line of cars, right?
Well, to be honest, the, the Caribou's location, I mean, the way that the lineup for that Caribou blocks up the entire parking lot on a busy winter morning is, uh, it, it's been something we've heard complaints about for years. But it was how it was designed, so.
I mean, you have to be aware that if, whatever we put there on a temporary basis, we need to make sure that our, we're selling it as temporary so that our residents aren't feeling, if we take it away for development, for instance.
Right.
We talked to a lot of people.
It almost needs to look temporary.
Yes. They're like, what if you used it for parking? Well, we don't want to use it for parking and then all of a sudden a resident feels like we sell their parking spots for a development. You know, it can't be used for a park. But we have to be careful that if we do put something there on a temporary basis, that it appears temporary, so residents aren't like, we gave it and then you took it away to, to build a development, you know?
Yeah.
So we just have to be a little mindful of what goes there so we don't get pushed back later if the right developer comes.
We leave the for-sale sign up.
Trust me, I'd love, creatively, every time I look at different pictures, I'm like, what about this? What about this?
Yeah.
That, I would love to be able to utilize it.
I honestly love the idea of putting a little bit of electric down there, throwing a couple picnic tables down there.
Well, you know, in the wintertime, you could put lights up or, you know, who, I don't.
Christmas tree sales.
And that's what I was going to say.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Refruit a Christmas tree lot.
Christmas tree sale, yeah.
We've had that conversation, so if you had electric, you would do it.
Yeah.
So, um.
The generator too.
They, they do, but you offer them electric and everything becomes more attractive, so. Yeah, it's.
Talk about farmer's market in the past. It could, it could complement that as far as outlets and stuff.
Any, any number of creative possibilities to provide a full temporary use on the lot. We just have to see if Scott wants to spend the money on the electric.
Scott, Mandy, Mandy.
Walk in with the EDA.
Seventy-three thousand dollars according to your fund balance on page 36.
Um.
Yeah, seventy-three thousand, there you go.
Unless, of course, that's earmarked for something.
It's not earmarked right now, no. Um, and I don't, I don't think it's a matter of whether or not there's money in there. I just think, like I said, if we do decide to put it in there, let's make sure that, kind of what we're talking with the streets and stuff. If we're going to do it, we got to do it right. We have to put some thought into where it's going to go, how it's going to, um, because I, we just, I don't want to do anything halfway that we realize, oh, it doesn't fit this need or whatever.
Would we need a lock for that? Like, too? Like, do people plug in?
I would think that they would have it like in campsites and stuff. They have the sticks with the electric. I'm sure they'd have locks and. Something.
Do any kind of a combo thing.
And really, if somebody's going to haul something up there to plug it in, have at it.
The quote we received from the typically most reasonable of the contractors we've worked with said, "There's currently no transformer on that site anymore. Excel would need to set one in addition to us setting a new service and receptacles. Our portion of, of the work would be in the neighborhood of 3,000 to 4,000 and the Excel fees could be double that."
It's about 10,000?
Yeah.
Without a building or anything, or anything.
You said Excel doesn't have what?
A transformer.
Transformer.
Right, there's no transformer on the site.
You need a transformer for?
10 to 12, that is what we're talking about? I guarantee Primo will do an extension cord for.
You could have a drop right outside the back of your building. Yeah, well. Well, how about, why don't, we could talk to the owner of the building because I think.
Oh, yeah.
He, like, the tenants don't pay electric directly, I don't think. I think they have the, what do they call it? Cam?
Yeah.
That, that's, it's included in there. So we could be a customer, sort of a tenant, electrical tenant of, of the building owner, maybe. I mean, and put it.
Just an outlet.
And put some outlets on the backside of the building.
Actually, yeah, adding citizens.
Yeah, I mean, that might be something.
That's a great idea.
To consider.
Especially if we were, if we spoke to them and, you know, because we don't know what's going to go there. We can't tell them we're going to be using this, you know, we plan to use a very small amount or we plan to use a very large amount. So if we just had it contract negotiable as.
Well, have them, have him put a, a meter on it and then he can charge us, you know, what, whatever the rate would be.
And we'd make it look nice.
Mm-hmm, right.
With lights.
I like that Christmas tree idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well.
Although you'd have to plow it.
Where am I going to store all my snowmen and balls?
Digging around a little bit.
Right around the Christmas trees?
All right, last call.
No snow, we're selling Christmas trees.
So our next meeting is on Monday, August 4. So let's determine for the work session. And followed by the council meeting after that, then, and then night to night the following night on Tuesday, August 5. Mark, account for that. I know you put out something about signing up if you're interested in holding neighborhood parties. Appreciate you doing that. Hopefully, we'll get some good responses to that. All right, if there's no objection, I'll adjourn the meeting by general consent. Hearing none, meeting's adjourned at seven, or 8:27 PM.